Just in case. Are you ready? All right, thanks to everybody for joining us tonight. This is our regularly scheduled work session. The goal of this work session is to have the town board receive information on topics of town business from the town manager, town attorney, and town staff in order to exchange ideas and opinions regarding these topics. First item on our agenda, this, I should say this, members of the public in attendance are asked to be recognized by the mayor before participating in any discussions of the town board. Tonight, our first agenda item is the Windsor Chamber update and discussion, being led by Michelle Vance, the Chamber of Commerce Director. Ms. Vance? Yes. I don't.
Okay, good evening. Good evening, Mayor, and Board of Directors. My first time speaking to you. And hi, Scott, hi Barry, hi Eric, hi David, hi Ken. And I haven't met you yet, and I don't know your name. I'm sorry.
Julie Klein.
Julie, nice to meet you. I'm Michelle Vance. So I'm Michelle Vance. I'm the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So on your screen is our, my presentation that I have for you this evening. I'm the Executive Director, and I've been on the job for about a month and a half. I'm very familiar with Windsor, and I'm very, very familiar with Northern Colorado as I was the Economic Development Director in Wellington. And so I'm very familiar with the region and what the region's been going through the last, you know, decade of the growth and all the things that have to do with that. And I'm honored tonight to speak to you about what we are planning and have done with the Windsor Area Chamber of Commerce. And if you're not familiar with the Chamber of Commerce, you will be tonight. So the Windsor Area Chamber of Commerce, and what is a chamber? We serve the local businesses that have joined to improve their value, visibility, and credibility. And we share news, ideas, and best practices to connect businesses with their market, but also help them have resources to better serve them. And that's what a Chamber of Commerce do. We're kind of the glue for the community. We're the advocate for them, and you'll hear in a minute on what we do as a Chamber of Commerce. But our job is the really, you know, the value, the visibility, and credibility of belonging to a group. It's kind of like, you know, different cities belonging to conglomerations to help pull their agenda and help, you know, make a community better. And that's what we are here to do. We're part of helping make a community better. So I wanted to talk about value and what Chamber of Commerce brings and what we bring. Marketing, one of the most amazing things that we do is we help businesses promote themselves and market. You know, businesses that are out paying it forward and visibility, and you're out there, that's one thing that we can do is help you market. We have an amazing access to multiple businesses, but also the government and the residents of the community. And so we are there to help you. And I have, you know, 15 years of marketing experience, and we have access to multiple chamber members that help cross-promote each business. And then advocacy, one of the things I think is amazing about a Chamber of Commerce is we are there to help push policy. There are sometimes, you know, policy that comes down from government which can help the business or hurt a business. And our job is to be an advocate for our members and the business community. And that's what a Chamber of Commerce does. Networking, and all of you have heard about Chamber of Commerce. You know, you have the networking opportunities to get out there, promote your business. But we set up the opportunity for networking. And it can be socially, it can be through the community, and then it also can be through just events and different types of things that a Chamber of Commerce can do. Professional development, that's one thing that I think is valuable to a business owner. It's not just opening a business, putting the open-up sign, and voila, you're in business, and you're gonna, all the money's gonna flow in the door. You have to constantly go through professional development. And I believe that wholeheartedly. And what's great about a chamber is the connections that we bring to the table with classes and our partnership with the Small Business Development Center, the town, the Economic Development Team of the town. We're all looking for resources to help somebody professionally develop. And it can be someone who works for a company that needs opportunity to improve their career. And that's our job as a chamber, to help them professionally develop. And then also getting involved. I'm sure you've heard this, the businesses that are out there all the time and paying it forward and involved in the community are probably your most successful businesses. They're not behind the door, they're not behind the desk, they're out there, they're public, and they're paying it forward, and they're getting involved in their community by sponsoring and by volunteering and by advocating for business. And you know what, staying politically connected, it's important for businesses to know who their elected officials are. And that's one thing that we can do is help them get involved. So visibility, one of the greatest things that I think that a Chamber of Commerce does is being able to get your name out there and be visible in the community. One of the programs and what I have been really striving for is new opportunities for a Chamber of Commerce. We need to change the way we do business. The old Chamber of Commerce of the old was, you know, you went to a mixer, you handed out your business card, and you put some flyers in the mail, and that was about it. And I think now that social media plays such a big part in promoting business, it's now time for us to get creative on how to get a return on investment by being a member of a chamber. And one of the things I'm most proud of is this Women of Windsor program. This is a new opportunity for our business-owned entrepreneurs and residents to be able to network with each other through professional development, but also have an opportunity to learn from each other. And the Women of Windsor, we had our first one last week, as you can see, was a sold-out group. Everyone was nice and social-distanced from each other. We had an amazing speaker, we had Katie Van Meter, I'm sure you know her. She was an employee here at the town. But she also now works for the Clearview Library District. And she gave a great presentation on branding and how your brand is not just a logo. And the ladies, you don't believe the vibe in that room. There was so much like networking going on, and people learning from each other, and just in a safe space. Because, you know, working in economic development for as many years as I have, women have a tendency to not share difficulties in front of men. And that's something that this is a good place for them to have an opportunity to feel in a small area. It's not a big room where you're raising your hand and exposing your shortfalls or things that you have issues with. This is a great way. And then also reigniting the 12 at 12. We've met with the mayor, and we've met with the Economic Development Team. And we are going to be meeting once a month. We're going to invite 12 business owners to lunch catered from us and partnership with the town. And we are going to invite them to be in a small setting where they can ask questions of the mayor, if they have any issues, if they have ideas. And it's just a great little, another, again, intimate setting to be able to discuss policy, to be able to discuss, you know, opportunities. And sometimes government, you know, I always like to say this, if it wasn't for business, we wouldn't have government. We need our, each other playing together in harmony so we can move a community forward. And then we have this great fun professionals group. It's kind of like our young professional, we call it fun. They don't want to be called young because we want to be, you know, very inclusive of everybody. But this is our group, it's a leads group, and it's really great. It's professionals in different categories of members of our chamber. But it's more of a relaxed setting, and it's an opportunity for people to promote their business, but also cross-promote and cross-pollinate, again, in a setting that it's intimate, small, and an ability to promote your business. And then we are, this, I've actually been approached by a few young entrepreneurs in town. We have some amazing families in this community that have deep, deep roots to Windsor. And some of the children are now at the age, and they're very, very entrepreneur. And they have this spirit in them. And so we are going to be doing a roundtable this fall that brings our young entrepreneurs with our seasoned veterans of the community. And we're going to have a roundtable on how to really promote and drive Windsor into the future. And it's what's lacking, what's needed. These kids are chomping at the bit to be able to, you know, they love self-employment, they love that freedom of being self-employed, and so we are going to have a roundtable for them. And then also, a part of my background, which I'm really proud of, is I used to manage all the community events for 15 years in the community I came from. And so I would like to partner with our Downtown Development Authority, the city, or the town, and to be able to help with community events and to be able to promote our businesses through a broader reach as our residents. I believe that communities that play together stay together. And I think this is an opportunity to promote our amazing downtown, but also to bring our members, you know, and to include them in the downtown and the town itself. So those are some of the new opportunities that we are embarking, just a couple. And then also our credibility. I'm not going to sugarcoat it. The Chamber of Commerce reputation hasn't been fabulous, and we understand that. And we are here to get our street cred back and to be able to become that amazing partner with the community, the town, the DDA, Northern Colorado Regional Economic Development Initiative, to be a better partner in the region because we have access to all these business owners. We need to have a better relationship and be in harmony, especially for what we are going to be facing in our future. We don't know economically how, what the waters look like. We don't know, you know, where the future lies. But if we're not all pulling on the same rope, we will all fail. And so I believe that the Chamber of Commerce will have a seat at the table. We will be a good partner with the town, the DDA, the Northern Colorado group, and with other communities. And we can all learn from each other, and we can all go forward and succeed. And I think Windsor is in an amazing position, just financially with the economics of the area. I think that we are going to weather the storm, but I think we'll come out on top if we all pull together. And that's our goal with the chamber, is the Board of Directors, they're on board. We had our first meeting as a group in years. And we met a month ago, we had the mayor there, we had our executive board there, we had the DDA board there. And we came up with some amazing ideas on how to work together as a group to be able to move our businesses forward. Because when our businesses grow, we can take care of our residents. We fill those potholes, hire more police in parks, and all those quality-of-life things happen when we have strong business. So in order to do that, I think we needed to peel away some old, just feelings and old, you know, images of the chamber. And so we have 100% rebranded in a month and a half. We have a brand-new brand, we have new colors, logo, but also we are going to be increasing our services. And if you look on that window, you see visitor information. That's one thing that I think is amazing, low-hanging fruit for Windsor. Windsor has so much to offer to the region, but also to our neighbors. When you pass that same dollar back and forth to each other, eventually that dollar leaves the circle. We need new cash. And in order to do that, the low-hanging fruit, which I think is a huge opportunity for Windsor, is visitors. We have really eaten all these cute little small towns, even Loveland. People come here every day. We need to organize, have a better organized effort on how to have them stay longer. And one of the things that we will be embarking on in the future is a bed tax. We're the only community in the region that does not have a hotel lodging tax. One of those things, and that's dollars that can help directly to our businesses to promote Windsor to the community, to the region, to the state, and have people come here to spend money. When you bring in new dollars, you support those businesses in downtown. You support, you know, the recreation department, you support the police department because all those dollars that come in help increase the quality of life of Windsor. And then also greater visibility. We are in the heart of downtown, and I think there's an opportunity for us to, well, ever since I put that sticker up on the window, I've had about 10 people a day come in in the morning saying, "I'm moving here, I need a map, I need some information. Where's the parks, what do you do here, where's the rec center?" I mean, we are going to be the information hub of the community. Because really, we don't have a place for new people to come. They can come to Town Hall, but they don't know where that is yet. Everyone knows where the chamber is. We are, our website is kind of like the phone book of the town. When you look up a member on our chamber, then they know that they are a credible business, somebody, you know, that's good to do business with, and you feel safe. And especially when you're a new visitor, you're, you need, or actually a new resident, you need doctors, you need a chiropractor, you need everybody, you need insurance. Your life changes, and you need something close to home. And that's what we're going to do with our visitor's center. And one of the things I'm really proud of, I managed a visitor's center for six years in the town I came from, and we did it with volunteers. So our goal is to manage about a four-hour-a-day volunteer base to manage our visitor's center. So I can still keep doing the work of the chamber and promoting our business, but also we can get foot traffic and have somebody, because I know there's lots of people that are really proud of this community, and you'd be surprised, we have volunteers come out of the woodwork because it's a really good thing to do to promote your community. And then also, we have a fresh new look. With that brand, we have revamped our membership, but also we have targeted the "Visit Us." This is an opportunity, like I said earlier, to bring in new visitors and to promote Windsor and highlight. And it's really great, we highlight the rec department, we highlight your beautiful, you know, trails and your events. And so that's a way to sell Windsor to our outside community. But also, it helps us serve our members better. And our membership with the return on investment is critical because why be a member if you're not getting anything for your dollar? Because dollars today aren't as easy as they used to be. And so our goal now is to be able to show value. And I think, my goal is to get 10,000 visitors a year to our visitor's center. That's my goal, and I can see it happening in Windsor. This is a beautiful town, has so much to offer. I think it's time that we capitalize. But we have, we are in a situation, I'm not going to lie, life hasn't been perfect over at the Windsor Chamber of Commerce. We've had some just difficulties in, I mean, the board is doing everything they can to right the ship, right? And we want our reputation to be stellar in the community. We want to make sure that we can serve our businesses. But we need partners. And since I've been here, I've been able to work with our current partners, the town, the, you know, Water Valley Land and what he, you know, Martin Lynn has to do. And with the DDA, the DDA has stepped up their investment. We're now going to help them with events, so now they see the value in what we're bringing to the table. But we are in a situation, until we get some type of lodging tax or something to help us promote our business owners, we're in a situation, because we haven't collected dues, and I walked into this knowing it. We haven't collected half of our dues since January. And that's around $40,000. And I am diligently out there talking to our business owners, but I'm just one person. And I would really appreciate, and I think our board would really appreciate, and our businesses would really appreciate, if we had more of an increased level from the town to almost be an angel investor in us, to give us the opportunity to right the ship, to get our ducks in a row, to give me time to really pull in the membership that we are lacking, but also show that the town is on board with us, the town cares about the business owners. And yeah, I'm just, we're doing everything we can to make sure that we are viable and a partner in the town. So, any questions?
That's a loaded question sometimes, Ms. Humphreys.
I kind of have a back, I like really tan.
Hands up from anybody that I see on the Zoom call? No? No? Oh, Mr. Sizalowski.
I didn't want to disappoint. Michelle, welcome. We have not met in person, but welcome to the new position.
Thank you.
I very much respect the energy that you've just shown us. And it'll be exciting to have someone with your experience, but also your drive heading up the chamber.
Thank you.
I guess, I am curious, I think you kind of were leading to an ask of the town, though you didn't quantify that, so I'm curious what you had in mind. But also, secondly, I guess, now that you've had some experience with the local town, the business owners, what are you feeling, what are you feeling from the COVID and the shutdown and the PPA or lack thereof? What's your sense of the morale, I guess, of the owners and the...
I feel that, okay, the fighters that fight are going to fight, right? And I believe the business owners here in Windsor are ready to fight. One of the things I'm really proud of, I met with a longtime investor, and they're doing quite well. They're in a business that's taking off. They up their investment in us because they want to help the guy that can't, right? If, I have some businesses that are like, I love the chamber, but I can't until September. I need to know, I need schools to start because I do awards. And I can't, I'm not making any money because I, we haven't had any award ceremonies, right? And so those are the type of businesses that the ones that can help are helping them. So we're not going to, you know, let them go because they don't have it now. We are going to carry them with the businesses that do have it. So that's, I feel that this town is ready to fight.
Thank you. And I guess, was there a specific ask that you were hinting at for the, for the town?
Around $45,000.
Okay.
Because that's what we have not collected. But my goal is to impress you and get back on board and to take those dollars and make more dollars for our community.
Okay.
So I want to interject here really quick. Mr. Bennett has a question, but a few of you don't know some of the history of the town with the chamber. Up until three to four years ago, the town's contribution to the Chamber of Commerce was actually $25,000 a year. And that got trimmed back about four years ago with the previous mayor for some other reasons. And so basically, with the new leadership, the new Board of Directors that the chamber has, that's why they're here today, sharing the new vision, the new logo, the new rebranding of the chamber in hopes that the town, at the very least, would be willing to go back to what previous level of commitment that we had. So they're setting the bar high, but are willing to negotiate with the town board.
Of course.
Mayor Pro Tem Bennett, I know you had your hand up. Go ahead with your question.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Mayor. Michelle, this is Ken Bennett. I've been meaning to stop in and say hello, I haven't done that yet, I apologize for that. I want you to know that I'm very excited about you being here. I know some of your background, and just very excited. I really like the way you've laid out kind of three-point approach to bringing our chamber back and how we can work those partnerships in the community. Really, I have a question for Stacy, a fellow in the audience. Stacy, we, as Paul said, we used to do $25,000. I think right now, we're giving about $5,000 to the chamber. Last I looked, we have a fairly healthy budget still in economic development incentives. Would we be able to increase our membership rate to the chamber out of your budget?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bennett. We do have, we did make a proposed budget where we slashed the particular ED Partners Fund, where that additional funding was come from. But I'm under the impression that it was not formally adopted. If you should choose to reinstate that money from there, we could grab $20,000 from that fund. The other fund that we do have access to is the Economic Development Incentive Fund that Mr. Mayor, I believe, referred to a little while ago. That not only had $40,000 left over after you guys did the loan fund investment of $75,000 and another $75,000 for the marketing grant program, but because a business retention-expansion company let theirs lapse, there is another $40,000 in that fund. So we have about $80,000 in the ED fund as well.
Well, and, can you hear me? I just have to project. Additionally, Ken and Board, so we're still working through the CARES Act, and it kind of wants to come. But we do believe our early analysis is at least the many marketing grants that the town board put out are likely going to be reimbursable by CARES. So there's a chance that some of the money we've already allocated out is going to come back to the town anyway. Same with our contribution to Upstate and our contribution to the Limerick County Fund. So we haven't been told yes from the state yet, we haven't actually even been able to apply yet. We're just in the queue. But there's a chance that all the money the town board has put out heretofore is going to come back.
Thank you, Shayden, that's a good point, so.
Yeah. I'm not sure of how much, that's what we should, that's what we should make, but I am inclined to say that we ought to do more. I think Michelle's walked into the situation that, like she said, is not perfect. I think they've got some ideas, I think the board's got some ideas. And I'd like to see us help them have an opportunity to rebuild a strong chamber. Does that take, whatever the number might be, I don't know how the other board members feel, but does that take a vote of the board, or is that just something that we give direction to do?
I think the board gives us direction.
If the board has consensus as far as its comfort level, because we haven't adopted budgets, if the board gives us direction, we can take action. And then the board will formally approve it when you approve a future expenditure list, whatever that amount is. And when you approve the expenditures, it'll be your formal approval of that. So all we need tonight is direction.
Mr. Wilson, I saw that you're, go ahead, sorry, Mr. Bennett.
Without jumping too far ahead of our colleagues, I just want to say that I would really like to see us try to help the chamber, give them a good chance here.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Bennett. And I will say that Michelle has already proven to be a great partner for me. She has an ED background, so I'm a little biased because I like her and she can help me out. So, but really, you know, with the DDA and Matt running that, and Michelle at the chamber, and us with our, it's really an extension of our economic development efforts town-wide. So I, you know, obviously, I'm selfishly in support of this to get the help that I need in this office needs. And I just, I know her, I've worked with her, she just knows what she's doing. So I have a lot of respect and support for Michelle.
Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
This is Barry Wilson, I have to say a couple of comments. Number one, Michelle, welcome, and thank you for all of this. I'm sure we'll be in touch soon. And I can agree with everyone's been saying, you know, with David, talking about the new energy brought to the chamber. I'm a business owner in Windsor just over a year. And the entire time up until recently, it was kind of in a state of flux. And so I feel the energy, I feel like it's coming together. And Paul, Mayor Rindman, I like what you said about, this is the new town board. And things are going to be different as far as our relationship with the chamber. And there's, I think there's nowhere to go but to improve it, so I'm excited about that as well. So however we can help, oh, that's financially, in some other way, I'm sure David and others, like myself, will want to see some of the details in that. But I think we're all, I think what I'm hearing is the kind of a consensus that we're here to help and work with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And it was Mr. Sizalowski. Sorry.
Thank you, ma'am. Just to kind of follow up, you know, I think we're all more or less saying the same thing. I think, Michelle, at least for me, Barry hinted that I'm sort of the devil details kind of guy.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, for me, the biggest motivation right now is to just help our businesses. And when COVID came in and we started doing shutdowns, I really lamented that we did not have a strong chamber because it really struck me that that is a time for that organization to have stepped up and really tried to pull businesses together to help share the pain, if you will, in some way. My goal still, in this very short run, is to do whatever we can with whatever dollars we have to help.
My goal still in this very short run is to do whatever we can with whatever dollars we have to help our businesses.
Thank you.
And I guess my, my philosophy is going to be that, is there something we can do to provide those funds directly to the businesses that will be more effective? Or will we be more effective providing support to the chamber? I don't know the answer to that, but that's one of the questions I'll want to see is, how exactly will those funds directly benefit the businesses? And is it more effective to do that than simply expand the grant programs we have or provide additional funding directly to businesses who need?
It's both, yeah. It's kind of a holistic, you know, approach. I'm an extension of Stacy's department, right? I'm business retention. That's my job is to make sure we retain our businesses. And with my background in economic development, I have all the tools in the toolbox to be able to assist Stacy and to outreach. When you have a thousand businesses in your town, that's how many business licenses you have. You have a thousand. And so my job is to make sure we reach out to them and help them succeed. But what's great, though, is the businesses that are doing well, their partnership is going to help the ones that can't. And next year, they all may all be able to. But right now, basically, you're, you're helping us do our job to market Windsor where all waters rise, all boats rise.
Any other questions from town board? I know Mr. Sizalovsky might have another one, but.
I have a question.
Oh, Ms. Klein. Sorry. She's on the dais. Can't forget about her.
Jump up. Jump up. Okay. No, so you'd mentioned several times about the VAT tax. Are you pursuing something?
A bed tax?
Yes.
We're now studying right now. So we're just thinking about the possibilities of what it would look like, how much revenue would bring in. Plus with your project that you have going on, the sports park, there's opportunities. So if we have something in place, it's not a shock to a new business. We have potentially three new hotels or what's going to go on up on crossroads and new opportunity. We want that in place because that bed tax will help directly market the town. More heads and beds. That's the goal.
So you're just saying you're in a research mode right now?
Right now, feasibility, yes.
Right. So, Ms. Klein, so the town board has discussed a lodging tax. So it's been, I think it came up at the strategic plan. The DDA has discussed it. I think when the DDA and the chamber of the town discussed it, we all agreed that the chamber was best suited to promote that. You know, the town, most of you set it for ballot Fair Campaign Practice Act sits. We can't spend a penny on it. And I think the chamber can represent the businesses and be in that advocacy role. So I think that there's still, you know, because there's a lot to it and we have a short window. We have a very short window between setting the ballot and moving forward. So there's a question of, is this the right time? If not, when? You know, where's the money going to go? So there's a thousand details between now and then. But right now, the chamber would be the lead organization.
Right. No, I realize that they're the organization and the contact and the feasibility. But I guess to your point, you know, it, do you think it's something that would be able to happen for this ballot? Or you guys are trying to target next year? That's, I guess, that's what I'm kind of looking.
Right. The next steps would be a survey. We need a statistically significant survey in order to see if this is even palatable in the community, right? I mean, the word tax and the war and the issues that we're going through, the tax doesn't, doesn't directly affect the resident that lives here. It's the visitor. So if, we just need to ask questions to guide the voter if there's something their ballot will take.
And I guess one more follow-up. So when the board discusses, I think the consensus was because no other organization locally is asking for a tax, now's the time is right. We learned after that discussion that the fire district is going to actually take a Gallagher question this November. So I think we all understand, people will understand lodging tax and property tax, that those are totally different publics, you know, those are different people paying that. But when it's on the ballot with whatever state taxing questions are there, it could look pretty crowded.
Yeah.
You know, it could look like a pretty crowded field. So I think Michelle is right that really doing a little bit of polling to see. I mean, a lodging tax should be a slam dunk. But I would think, it's already failed here twice, so it's not a slam dunk. And this year, you know, I just don't know what other headwaters are going to have.
Right. When someone sees the word tax, they just say no.
Yep.
Regardless of whatever it was.
Right.
Tax the squirrels. They'll say no.
It has to be an amazing marketing campaign. We have to get our big businesses, we have to get some key businesses to support it, too.
Well, I'm writing, yeah, taxing squirrels. I like that.
Any other questions from town board that's on the call, Zoom? Any, you had a couple more people that wanted to speak.
I have a guest that asked to come tonight, one of our businesses.
So if you would, say your name, your business, and maybe the address of your business.
Sure. Can everybody hear me? Can you guys hear me on Zoom? Good. Okay, perfect. Well, my name is Alicia Miller and I own a business called Alicia Squared LLC. And when Michelle was talking about one of those young hungry entrepreneurs, that'd be one of me. I'm a Northern Colorado native. In fact, my family are pioneer roots. So in my relationship that I recently formed with Michelle, I have that same energy that she's presented here today to just be part of that change that we want to see in Northern Colorado and see it grow in the way that we want to. You know, my heart is here, my family's here. In fact, I've already partnered with another entrepreneur, native. We're the same age and we're looking to bring healthcare, group healthcare via the chamber for the local businesses. So we're still ironing out the details with that, but that's actually a potential way that the chamber could make some money and the businesses could bring, bring some money in with that, too. So I just wanted to come here today to support Michelle and support the cause and support the chamber and the town of Windsor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, come on, Mayor.
Anyway, that's all, that's all for tonight. I'm here to answer any questions. Scott is our liaison. He's here. Hi, Scott.
Yeah, Scott, did you want to say something? You've been sitting in on some of the recent meetings.
I certainly heard that, Mayor, but I am certainly in support of getting them the money they need just as quick as we can.
Okay. Mr. Pringer, I see that you joined us by video there. Did you have a few comments that you wanted to make as well? Oh, unmute yourself. Unmute yourself, Tom. There you go.
You must have a speaker or microphone muted, too? Tom, we still can't hear you.
Yeah, we can't, still can't hear you, Tom. Is your microphone turned up? Ms. Sampson, I know you're on the line, too. You're on the, one of the ambassadors. Did you want to share any comments?
Sure. I just, can you hear me?
Yes.
I just want to say that I commend Michelle to have the courage to get up and just hit the ground running through all of this. In the short time I have known her, she has really proven to just be a go-getter. She's here to work. She's here to get the job done. And as a liaison to the ambassadors, I know, speaking for myself, I'm here to do everything I can to help her be successful as well and to help the chamber for the town of Windsor continue to grow.
And a great fun fact, I think we've grown like, what, six new members in our ambassadors?
Yes, we have.
There's Tom.
Hey, there's Mr. Pringer.
There's Tom. Hi, Tom.
Go ahead. This'll work. This'll work. In this day and age, that's okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I don't think your meeting administrator wanted me to join because the first email I got was from the Kern Reservoir Board. So, you know, guys don't look like that. But I want to thank, thank the town board for allowing the presentation today. And we've always had a good partnership in the past and I know we can keep that. I'd like to renew that. And we've got a really good director now. And we've made, I think Michelle said, we've made our commitment for 2020 to the, to the chamber. And I think we're going to do great things. We have the ability to think on our feet right now. Michelle is really making a difference in our chamber and we appreciate anything you can support us with. So thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
So, check, is he going to call into the Kern Board or no?
Yeah.
Well, I approved a minute for the Kern Board meeting. All right, guys. Thank you again. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Pringer. That all being said, are there any other questions from town board? Ms. Humphreys, are you seeing any? No? Do I have a thumbs up from the town board? This might be the easier way to do it. Are we in concurrence with, Mr. Sizalovsky, sorry. Go ahead.
No, that's okay. I raised my hand kind of at the last minute. I guess, Mayor, what I'm, what I'm kind of hearing, and it feels to me like, I guess I feel like we maybe need to discuss as a group a few things. One is the lodging tax. And it sounds like that we're certainly leaning toward not doing anything on the ballot this fall. But also the nature, size or nature of investment that we make in our business community and whether that's a direct grant program expansion or a grant to the chamber. I just feel like this probably needs some more discussion.
Ms. Miller might be able to better clarify here and possibly answer your question in the process.
Thank you, Mr. Sizalovsky. So the intent is actually for the chamber to move forward to put the visitors' tax on the ballot this fall. They're in the investigative stages right now and collecting cost analysis for what that would cost to go onto the ballot for this fall. The second part of that is also, when they get the survey back, is it feasible to go on the ballot this fall? What are the hurdles that we as a community need to overcome so that we can get it on the ballot? And we're hoping, it is a tight timeframe, but like Mr. Hale mentioned, we think that this is the best win for Windsor to get this on there. And I have no doubt in the fact that Michelle's advocacy and her voice can spread the message a little bit better than we've had done in the past. I think that was a huge gap, was not only the funding to move this forward, but also the advocacy and spreading the message in the correct way. I think what's nice about Michelle and funding this organization is that she mentioned she does BRNE efforts. Well, her business retention efforts do not replace what Jill does, but she partners with Jill on that. And then also does business retention expansion efforts in the form of events, networking, lead sourcing, all of those things that we can't do and don't have capacity to do in my department at this time. So it's a whole nother avenue of bringing businesses together and making them stronger by providing them leads, prospects, building their, their capacity within their own organization and then hopefully partnering with the town when we want to keep them here, right? In a physical space and get them to grow. And Jill and her have already had a couple of meetings and plan on working together very closely in that capacity. And then the stronger our community is with the visitors, and I know that that's been a component that has been missing for, for several years with our chamber, was really that ability to welcome people into the community and to talk to them about all the amenities that Windsor has. We already know Windsor's awesome, right? I mean, we, you know, we know it is. But when we have a lot of people that are coming here, that's a component that I need the advocacy on and I need the help for that. The other component that has to do with that is when she does and talks about all these great events that she wants to do to showcase there, there's an interesting twist with economic development about people that come in from out of town for events and then they get exposure to your town, your community, and then they say, you know what? Windsor's kind of cool. Windsor's got it going on. I want to move my company here. And that's the non, you can't, you know, validate that with specific numbers always unless you get here directly from them that this is where they heard it from and they're coming because they went to this event and they did it. But there is a component of economic development that shows tourism. And that marketing component exposes people that have businesses that want to not only grow them here, but actually bring their companies here from other states, hopefully, because we don't want to rob from our neighbors. But that's the component that, that we need and that we've been missing, too. So I think we can support both. I think we can continue with the marketing program and continue to fund and do grants through that program as well as through Upstate Colorado, as well as the Laramie County Loan Fund, which you guys have already been in support of. And then I think we can also do the advocacy piece for the chamber as well to have them pull on that full-on marketing arm that I have not been able to pull off in my department. So does that help make it a little bit clearer, maybe?
I guess, I guess what you were suggesting, and so let me put it this way. We certainly have already funded the Laramie County Program, the marketing support brands. So this is new money and we're talking, let's assume it's twenty-five thousand dollars. And what I'm hearing you say, it's not a both. If you, if you had to pick a place to best invest that twenty-five thousand, are you, is it the chamber? Or is it expanded, expanded involvement in one of the other grant programs?
If I can jump in here. So, thank you, David. So one is, I believe that our investment so far in the marketing grant program as well as the Laramie County Fund in Upstate are highly likely to be eligible for reimbursements for the CARES Act. So I can't confirm that 100% because right now the state is at a point of even accepting our reimbursements yet. And so we're just kind of in the queue. So based on our reading of the CARES Act, I believe that entire hundred fifty thousand dollars, more or less, will come back to the town. So that is not true with Michelle saying, I don't think that just a twenty-five or forty-five thousand dollar contribution will be eligible for that. But I do believe this other money we put out would be eligible for CARES Act reimbursement. I would also tell you that staff has been working very hard. A lot of work was done last week and continues in defining additional ways we can support our business community. And Stacy's done a lot of work on that. We found some great examples with the city of Aurora and things that they put out, or was it Arvada?
Arvada.
Arvada, sorry, wrong A. The, the Arvada, they've done some great programs and business support. So we hope in September, or it's in August, actually, when we come and talk to the board about our kind of response to the epidemic. I hope a lot of our conversation is what else we can do for the business community. And so that's what we're kind of pulling together. So, so don't think about chamber support as either we do this or we do that. I think that we're going to be able to continue to support our business community through additional grants and programs as well as, I think the board can support the chamber. So it's not an either or. I think we can do both. So, and that's probably another long answer for you, David.
Mr. Bennett, I know that you had another question. Go ahead.
Yeah. You know, if I spend a dollar of my own money, I kind of want to know what I'm getting for it. And if we're going to spend town money, that's taxpayer money, I really want to know what we're getting for it. So I kind of understand some of the questions being asked about whether we most effectively spend our money. But I'm looking at it in terms of two things. One, we have money that was budgeted for this type of activity in our accounts. And also I'm concerned about the timeframe. November's coming up pretty fast. And to prepare for, to help the chamber prepare for anything, there's only three or four months to go. So I want to reiterate again that I think we ought to make investment for this year. I don't know about future years, but for the remainder of this year, we should increase our investments with the chamber. I think we should do it faster rather than later.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I have a clarifying question, I guess. So I want to make sure that, can, can they hear me okay now? So I wanted to make a clarifying question. Stacy, you were saying that basically it's, this isn't new money that would be given to the chamber? I guess that's maybe one of the things that's kind of passed over a couple of people. It's money that was already in the economic development budget that you see that you could not use and you could repurpose it.
So it's both. So it's both.
So it is new money?
So there's, there's a little bit of confusion. So it's, it's both. And I was trying to, to, I guess, give you the sources of where those funds could come from, that we have the money. It's just, we've never given that large of a chunk to the chamber in, in previous years. So I have an Economic Development Partners Fund that's in my budget that the board has been using as discretion to invest in other economic development agencies as our partnership. The one that we had for the chamber was set at twenty-five thousand dollars. I left that money in there because based on current trends, we didn't know what was going on. So from last year, when we did the budget that was passed in November, that had twenty-five thousand dollars in it for the chamber. Not specifically, all of it had to go there. We set the Lebanon at the five, was directed to do the five thousand dollar base. And actually, until Michelle came on, I was not directed to pretty much do anything yet because we wanted to see if we were going to have some new leadership and new blood into the chamber. So once we moved forward along that, I sent out the five thousand dollars out of that, typically that twenty-five thousand that we had been investing in the chamber. So when we did the reallocation because of the COVID crisis, I pulled that twenty thousand dollars out as a possible line item to cut. That budget was never formally adopted, is my understanding, by the elected officials. So technically, the money was budgeted and is in there. If you should choose to use it, that was a line item of where it could come. If you should choose to use it, that was a line item of where it could come out of for the Economic Development Partners Fund in my particular budget. The other item that you guys have control over is that $200,000 Economic Development Incentive Fund. That fund has money left over from the allocations that you did earlier this year for the $75,000 for loan fund, the $75,000 for the mini-grant fund, there was about $40,000 left over outside of the other commitments that we'd already made for the expansions and new companies coming in. So, that's where we reimburse enterprise funds out of.
And that's the money that you're saying we might get reimbursed for that we're in the CARES queue?
So, that $150,000 that you guys spent earlier out of that fund, it looks like it has potential to be reimbursed, but to Shane's point, we can't guarantee it, but that is pretty much what we, we expended that money but for the COVID.
And even if it doesn't get reimbursed, you're saying there's still 20 left of that?
No, there's still 80,000.
Oh, there's still 80,000, okay.
So, 40,000 left over from what we had allocated and what we had promised, but of that money that was already promised, $40,000 will no longer be asked for out of the 200,000. It's kind of confusing, I should have done a slide for you, but one of our companies, their incentive agreement expired, and they are no longer going to expand in Windsor. So, that company, that particular company, if they would have done it and built it out this year, we would have had to use $40,000 of that 200,000 to go back to them. That's no longer the case. So, really, at the end of the day, if you look at it, 150 for whatever we had, we had a larger fund than 200 because we had some carryover from last year. So, you really have about $80,000 in the Economic Development Incentive Fund that you could take the whole amount out of and not mess with the ED Partners Line, or if you chose to go back to the ED Partners Line, there was an additional 20,000.
And the board shouldn't worry about which line. I think it's just, I think the board should say, this is the level we're comfortable with.
Yeah.
And we'll come back to you and let you know where.
Where it came out of, okay.
Yeah, we got the money, pots of money to choose from.
Right, so I guess I just wanted to clarify that it's already in a budget, it just depends which line of the budget it's coming from.
Yeah, sorry, I could have just said, yeah.
That's, sorry.
Mr. Sisowski.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, one, Shane probably knows the answer here, since we're talking about the chamber being involved with this bed hotel tax. I guess I have general impression that the town is really, or doesn't take a position on it. Is there any concern if we make a contribution to the chamber and the chamber is seen as using those funds in turn to promote the bed tax? Are we indirectly, is there any issue for us?
Right, I, the Fair Campaign Practice Act is really clear, once a ballot is set, once we set a ballot question, we can't expend any taxpayer monies in any way for that. We can't print out one brochure with that. You know, if we get any questions, like I can answer factual questions, but we can't advocate for that. So, you're right about that. I think if we contribute money to an agency that also goes and promotes a tax, I don't see any issues. I'm kind of looking at Ian, I don't think there's any Fair Campaign Practice Act issues. I think we'd already set the ballot, and she came in and said, hey, look, I want to help promote this, I need $25,000 to get me over the hump. I think that would be a problem. But right now, I don't see that necessary nexus here. I think the chamber's looking for general support from the town. One of the things that they're working on is promoting this question, which, so.
Mr. McCarter?
Yeah, I agree with that. David, it sounds like Ms. Vance is asking the town to support the chamber on a number of different initiatives, and I would not see it as a likely challenge under the Fair Campaign Practices Act. So, I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
It may be a timing issue, just make sure we do this before we get too far down the road and turn the setting about.
That's right. I think that that's clear, and again, you know, to be in the spirit of fair campaign practice, I haven't heard her say anything other than she's working on a number of initiatives, that's one of them. So, you know, they're looking, I think, the delta that she identified, is there shortage in revenues from historical memberships? That's kind of the amount of money they need. So, I think that that's really the nexus that she's tied to. So, again, yeah, I think if we had a campaign, if we had a ballot question set, I would be more concerned than the timing and the conversation we've had tonight.
Okay, thank you, Shane.
I would concur with a lot of the board members and staff to say that the role that Ms. Vance has played since she was unanimously selected by the Hiring Committee for her current role, she has done more in the last two months since she has started than the previous Executive Director had done in the 10 months that he had that role. So, I will tell you, she's already gained a lot of memberships back, they are on the right track, they're headed in the right direction, and I've also made it very clear, though, that although there is this ask right now with them getting back up and running and firing on all cylinders, this does not implement or obligate the town to this level of commitment, obviously, in years going forward. I think that it would be fair to have Ms. Vance come back each year before we spend that money in order to find out where the chamber's at, their membership, what initiatives that they have going, before we continue our membership at whatever level of contribution that that might be. So, with that, I know that this is a great return on investment right now with all of the initiatives that they are undertaking, and I think it's money well spent on behalf of the town. So, with that, I'm in favor of this. We have it budgeted, we have it in the right sector that it needs to be in. And I'll also remind the board members as well that in other communities such as Greeley, who has a really thriving chamber, that they, the city of Greeley has actually put money into the chamber for distribution to the businesses. So, the normal mode of operation here is to go through the chamber in order to partner with these businesses, and I can't think of a better way right now that Windsor could do that than with Ms. Vance and using this money from Ms. Miller's economic development budget, whatever line item it might be, the money is budgeted and it is there for this purpose. So, with that, I'm comfortable in supporting this ask at this time.
I would also be in support of it, but I think we need to put a dollar amount on that instead of just a blanket, you know, and say, the dollar amount is 40,000 at this current time.
I would throw it out there, the ask was 45, that's why.
I know, but I'm telling you, I'm comfortable with 40.
Oh, okay, okay. I guess I need to hear then from the other board members, I'm sorry, I was going to get a thumbs up, but Mr. Carpenter, where are you at on this?
I'm here.
Who's that? I need to know what your level of support, what your vote of level of support is at this time.
Who's the ask before?
I know, I need a dollar amount. Are you in support of the 45 that was the ask, or another number?
My thought was, certainly the first, the other, remaining 20 to go out right away, but I am open to the 45 as well.
Okay. Mr. Talon?
Yeah, stay with me, if we have in the budget for the 20,000 to go out, if we can find another 20, 25,000 to go out to help the chamber get flowing again, working, I would support.
Okay. Mr. Bennett?
I heard, talked 45, but we're already getting five, so is it 40 additional or 45 additional?
It'd be 45 additional.
Either way, I'm okay.
Yeah, it'd be, well, I mean, the proposed amount would be, that was what the ask was, was 45, so it would put our total contribution for this year at 50.
It's 45 total, so it's an additional 40.
No, it'd be an additional 45. We've already contributed at the $5,000 level.
So, for this year, we'd be contributing, I'm okay with, I just want to be clear, for this year, we'd be contributing 50,000?
Yes, in total, if.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
I'm okay with, I just want to be clear, yeah.
Yes.
And we're not, and, yeah, I'm hoping we have a partnership going forward, but we're not committing to next year at this point either.
That's exactly right. I am not comfortable with that either at this point. Correct?
I'm good, I'm in.
Okay. Mr. Sisowski.
So, I think I understand, certainly from Stacy, that the funds are available and in her budget, and I'm guessing, because she was more or less recommending and saying it's available and she'd be okay with that, she's not, she's not seeing anything on the horizon that would cause her to need additional incentive funds between now and the end of the year.
You want to address that?
If that's true, and that money is in her budget and available, I'm okay with doing the additional 45, although I am a bit nervous about it. I think Scott's suggestion would be to do the balance of the 25, meaning additional 20, but kind of work through the additional 25 a little more carefully, looking at budgets, but I think Stacy's about to do that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sisowski, that is correct. There is about $80,000 left in the Economic Development Fund. I would support the ask to come out of that, or whatever funds you choose, after talking to Shane, but we definitely have about $100,000 between both funds to play with should you choose to distribute the full 45. I do not see any more projects that are on the horizon right now, and even if they did, most likely the funding would come out of 2021 or 2022. It is a reimbursable fund, so that's what it's used for. And we've already included in all the ones that we plan on reimbursing this year, that's why the fund only has 80,000 and not 200.
Great. So, you know, based on that, I think that's the answer I was looking for, so I would support the additional 45 coming out of that economic development fund.
Okay, so straw poll, Mr. Sisowski, 45. Mr. Bennett, you're okay with 45. Mr. Carpenter, you're okay with the additional 45. Mr. Talon, you're okay with the additional 45? And Ms. Klein?
I can change mine.
And so am I.
I can go to 45.
She can support it. Mr. Wilson, sorry, I'm not trying to leave you out.
And Julie?
Yes, I said 45.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I am, I agree with what Ken and David both brought up, that especially since the funds are already identified and we're looking at this year not an ongoing thing just yet, I think it's the right thing to do.
So, you're in support of 45? Okay, and you have any unanimous support of 45,000?
Well, I just want to thank you all, and the businesses, thank you, our Board of Directors, thank you, thank you for believing in us. I think we are a critical partner in this community, and your faith just shows that you're pro-business and you care about our business owners, and that is a huge signal, and thank you. And I love the idea of coming and giving a presentation.
We welcome you to that, and thank you for all that you've done, and we are looking forward to the future.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, moving on to item number two, Harvest Fest discussion. Is this Mr. Lucas that's taking it from here, or Mr. Hale?
I'm going to just kind of kick this off, Your Honor, and then I think actually Tara Foach is going to jump in here.
Oh, Ms. Foach, okay.
So, as board knows, you know, we've, staff has been discussing kind of internally on whether or not we can recommend continuing on with the Harvest Fest. You know, while it has many components, I think everybody recognizes that easily the biggest component is the parade itself, and anybody who's been to Windsor knows how special that parade is, but also how jam-packed it is, you know, kind of elbow-to-elbow, shoulder-to-shoulder the entire parade route. So, you know, when we were doing our analysis, you know, we really had to rely on the latest state order, and in that guidance, it caps outdoor events to a maximum of 175 people. That's kind of the biggest number you can get if you don't have a separate variance. And so, as you can imagine, I mean, 175 people in an outdoor venue for the Harvest Fest, I mean, that's not, you know, one block for the Harvest Festival. So, it doesn't look as though we think that we can continue on in any kind of normal capacity. What I'm happy to tell you, though, is that Parks and Rec staff, people really sat down, and similar to, I think, the board's reaction with the Fourth of July when we discussed the fireworks, staff's been working really hard to figure out what other things we could do, things that we could do responsibly, ways that we could celebrate with the community that are like kind of not Harvest Fest as usual, but still celebrating Harvest Fest and doing what we can to gather the community. So, with that, I think, and I haven't seen if he's here, but I know that Casey was invited to participate, so maybe if we could like have Tara jump in and walk over a little bit on the advance and just kind of what we're thinking, fill in questions from the board, and then if Casey is on the call, I think obviously everybody would like to hear from you as well, sir.
So, unfortunately, Casey works for Pootersville District, and they are getting charged up with all their IT needs that unfortunately had an emergency tonight, so he is unfortunately stuck at work. I do have my phone here in case I need to text him if you guys have any questions, or we can follow up with those questions at a later time if you guys have any specifically for him. Last Friday, Lexi and I sat down with Casey, and he brought us a fantastic plan of four different levels of possibly having the Harvest Festival, and really based on, you know, what are those restrictions, and he was definitely well aware of the 175 at a certain venue. And as you guys know, and Shane just mentioned, we definitely lined the streets for that parade, a couple miles worth on both sides, and there are at least four or five booths. We have over 200 booths that fill main parks every Sunday and Monday of Harvest Festival, and if you put 200 booths with just one vendor working each booth, we're already over our capacity. And if we honestly can't have the parade in the booth, that's really the heartbeat of the Harvest Festival. So, unfortunately, with our capacity being at 175, we came to the conclusion between the three of us, and then had further discussions with Eric, Shane, and Chief Klemmick, that we would just have to do some type of modify, as Shane mentioned, it's not going to be what we're all used to and what we all love about Labor Day weekend here in Windsor. I'll just share my screen real quick. These are just some alternative programs, opportunities that we could come up, just to offer a little bit of something for the group. Someone give me a thumbs up if they see that pop up.
Yeah, well, we can see it. Tara, can you expand it, though?
Is that blowing up a little bit for you?
Yeah.
Yep?
Good.
All right. So, we talked about on Saturdays, Sunday, and Monday mornings, still offering the balloon launch out at Eastland Park. Saturdays, we currently have our farmer's market, which is already something. We keep our history museums at Boardwalk Park open all three days, and then offering the fireworks at Boardwalk Park, and if Boardwalk Park restricts us from having, if the restrictions by Labor Day are still at that 175, which we're unfortunately thinking will happen, we'll kind of look at alternative locations like we did for the Fourth of July. We have come up with some ideas, the Parks and Recreation staff, on a Harvest Festival porch party set, mother communities surrounding us did this for the Fourth of July, and they handed out a couple hundred of them, just some different activities to celebrate the Harvest and Labor Day. We talked also about doing some type of fall yard decoration contest, judging a week out, and then maybe, I don't know, back where I grew up, it is like yard of the week signs, but, you know, kind of prefer to check it out and encourage people to get out and check out porch decorations. We did talk about doing the car show and limiting the car show to 100 cars, and then having them sign up in waves of an hour and a half of 75 participants, kind of like we're doing at the pool in the recreation center now, and have folks come through. We talked about continuing to do the doggy dip, which we can keep that capped out. We also talked about possibly bringing in food trucks. We know that all those food trucks and food vendors are also struggling with all the festivals being canceled this year, that how could we kind of space them out through town and say, hey, you know, the Eurostand, is that Boardwalk Park head there, kind of thing. Then we also talked about doing neighborhood kiddie parades, where we've worked with the police department definitely on the logistics of it all, but, you know, if David wants to run a kiddie parade in his neighborhood, it would be non-motorized, kids decorate their bikes up and stuff, and then they pick up their packages at the recreation center. David would then do that theme weave for his neighborhood, and they would just have small, little neighborhood parade, just to kind of give everyone that feel. We did, continued with the move in the park, which we do every Sunday of Labor Day, and then also talked about doing some virtual bingo. Those were just kind of our tentative list of options and ideas for the weekend, just to offer a little bit of something in the community. Staff really did balkenize on doing anything, just really wanted to help out the festival committee in any way that we could. Anybody have any questions or concerns? Anybody have any questions or concerns? And then the festivals, they did still pay for their fireworks, and they have adequate sponsors for those fireworks, so they will not be requesting their funding for 2020 this year.
I certainly can't speak on behalf of Mr. Sizlowski, but he might be interested in a scooter parade in his neighborhood.
He has that book.
The power scooters. Sorry, Tori, you missed, there was a prior meeting where I was making much ado about the gasoline-powered little scooters.
So, these are non-motorized.
Mayor Renameyer is merely making a dig at my expense.
Mr. Bennett, you had a question?
Sorry, I can certainly foresee a golf cart parade or something in Water Valley, but I may look to you to get ideas and maybe get a packet of things to help people put things together. It's just good, good thoughts.
Mr. Bennett, did you have a question? Mr. Bennett? Go in once?
Yeah. Fireworks, would they, we hit the same location that we did on the Fourth of July?
So, at this point, we haven't really gotten into those details and worked out arrangements and stuff. I think I think everyone would love to have it at the lake, but if we are restricted at that 175, statistically, we know that's not possible.
Yeah, I thought that worked well, and I just, I don't want to see government encouraging large crowds, so I thought the Fourth of July thing went well. Second thing, we kind of talked about this around the Fourth of July, too, a neighborhood decorating contest. We've got that, the porch kit and fall yard decorating. It's possible, it'd be kind of cool to run that through the neighborhood leaders that we have for the neighborhood night out, and maybe have a contest within neighborhoods. And what I did, we talked about before, is winning yards or homes, get a gift box. And I think it's just lost, you said we'd put a face mask in there, or a toilet paper, but I'm thinking gift certificates for shop downtown Windsor, or shop Windsor, something, something, maybe there's an opportunity here to combine with the chamber and the DPA about sometimes a gift box is something for the neighborhood, or for the winning, that win for local, so Windsor businesses, so whatever would be fun and peaceful to do.
Great idea. Mark that down.
And if the house is decorated and we have a map like they do for Christmas lights to get everybody just driving around and voting, do a, do a citizen vote on what's their favorite house?
Yeah. It's kind of a neat opportunity. I mean, we all enjoy staying up and watching the parade, of course, we get to march in it. But watching the parade is one thing, but being able to do something in your neighborhood, involving your neighbors in a way, that's getting people more involved, where they're actually doing something would be really cool.
Absolutely, yeah.
Are there any other comments or questions? Sorry, I keep forgetting.
Don't worry, I'll speak up. You won't forget me.
All right. Well, with that, we appreciate you laying that out. Did Mrs. Spike, Ms. Spikestra have anything she wanted to add? We don't get the pleasure of her accompaniment on our calls and meetings. No? Okay, she's making clear she doesn't want to, okay.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us today. Mr. Lucas, anything from you, dare I ask?
Nothing.
Okay. All right. So, staff has direction on Harvest Fest? All right. We're good. Well, with that, I want to thank you all for joining us for this evening's work session, and we will go ahead and call this meeting to end. For the board members, I do need you to stay on for the current board meeting that we will be having right after this. So, with that, have a wonderful evening, everybody.